We're welcome to the special call meeting to discuss the American Rescue Plan Act. It's an overview for the town of Eaton and the funding consideration for community outreach. Right, so Cory, I'll let you take over.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give everyone kind of an update, thank you for being here and just a general overview of what the American Rescue Plan Act is. The American Rescue Plan Act was established in March of 2021 by the federal government and allocated over 1.9 trillion dollars towards a federal stimulus to aid the public health and economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic. Of these funds, the town of Eaton has received two installments, each valued at $735,235 or a grand total of $1.47 million in relief funding. The first installment was utilized to help the town operational needs. And the second installment, the council has determined should go towards community outreach and quality of life. So that's an overview of the American Rescue Plan and how it impacted the town. When we look at item B, the funding considerations, one of the things that was provided tonight in the agenda are five potential items that could receive funding. This is preliminary list of opportunities that we've explored. None of these items are set in stone just yet. We do want to have a public forum when we consider generating this list and what costs and what funding that we should share with the general public for whatever outreach programs that they feel need to include. If we look at the first one, we're looking at an allocation of roughly $250,000 towards housing. One of the biggest impacts the town of Eaton faced over the last two years, COVID and post-COVID, can be seen in local housing needs. One of the things that we have seen a great need for is housing improvements, closing cost assistance, and potential new home sites for growth in our area. These have very much been restricted over the last 24 months. The town of Eaton staff has discussed options to address or at least help with these three problems that we've seen in our housing quantities. And we have partnered with the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA, to help them with some of their existing programs. The existing programs that they have in place, it's a 502 and 504 program that we can partner with USDA to help with two of the housing problems. The 504 program is designed to help homeowners with home improvements. And the 502 program is designed to help with single-family housing loans. The last item would be to designate some type of closing cost assistance to help firemen, police, EMS, public servants with closing costs associated with homeownership as well. When we talk about the 504 program, that is an up to $50,000 program the USDA offers, of which the first $10,000 is grant and the remaining $40,000 is low-income loan. And so what we've considered doing with USDA is any funded needs after that initial $10,000, is the potential to do up to $10,000 match with USDA through their vetting process, do upwards of $20,000 in home repair for low and moderately low-income homeowners to help with needs they may have. When we talk about the 504 program, this is a program that, or 502 program, excuse me, is designed to help with single-family homes. At this time, we're working through some of the logistics of this. This program is used to build new construction homes. It has some of the same vetting requirements and income requirements that the 504 program requires. What the town's goal is, is to partner with the Eaton Show and Partnership with some of the opportunity that we have with vacant lots in town, potentially help new homeowners find unoccupied lots that are municipally owned to potentially be a source for new construction. We can go into more details around that program in the near future. We have received most of the supplemental documentation from USDA. We have those on file. We haven't set a start date for applications or deadline yet, but we did want initially to at least engage the public to let them be aware of those programs. Any questions around the housing?
Can I ask a question about that 504? I'm getting approached by a lot of senior citizens that need work done to their houses, floors and stuff like that, insulation, bathroom floors are falling in. What would be the qualification for giving a loan like that?
Well, it depends on income. It also depends on whether it's a single homeowner or someone who's married or widow. It depends on where they are. All that information is on file and readily available for the public at the town hall we have. We can sit down with any individuals who are interested in that 504 program, introduce them with USDA rep and go ahead and at least have some initial conversations. There's quite a bit of information that's there, but we do have that on file that we can share with the general public. If someone's interested, they can come to the town hall.
So I can just tell the people who are asking you to come down?
Yes.
And talk to you about 504?
Yes, and both of these programs are geared towards owner occupied. These are owner occupied options.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions around the housing piece?
Any provision for teachers? I know you mentioned a lot of first responders. Is there any provision for our teachers?
So we're trying to work out the details on the closing cost assistance program. There are some loans that are available out there that are 100% financed, but some folks still struggle with the closing costs associated with those loans. We're trying to work out the legal ramifications and protections of the town and what we can and can't do. We will be glad to share more information about what we are able to do for a loan closing assistance program, which will be the third piece of this housing initiative by the town. So I don't have all the details at this time, but we are working with USDA and town council to try to figure out how we implement this program. And it should be along the lines of some type of self-paying loan. Council can help.
But they're not required to use sole USDA. They can use another funding assistance from a lender or whatever.
The only conversations we've had now with them, USDA, if there are other options out there, that's something we'll need to explore and bring them in so we can use them to help us with the vetting process.
You know, no file on date has been set yet for people trying to get that 501?
That's correct. This is strictly informational to get the news out to the general public. The second thing that we have, funding considerations that have been considered is recycling trailer. If you remember back in February of 2022, over three years ago, the town lost its recycling program. Since that time, we've been in conversations with North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, working on grant opportunities to secure a second trailer for our Public Works Department to use. Public Works Director is still working with the EQ Waste Management Group on that. We have got the application together. They do a 40,000, up to $40,000 grant towards equipment purchases. And we feel confident that we should be able to find a nice recycling trailer for us to use to restart our recycling program. So one of the things we've considered from the mayor's task force group as well as some of the other comments that we've just received from the general public is they would like to see that recycling program. And we feel like this is the quickest way to get that back going.
What are these walking trailers made?
It depends. Most of the ones we've looked at are either come out of a tight order area from some type of sales distributor and we've found ones closer to shore. But as far as where they're manufactured at, I don't know. So the goal of this is would be to use half of the town's funds and half of the state funds that were awarded to purchase a new walking floor trailer. The third item was, excuse me, any questions around the recycling trailer?
When would that, oh, sorry. When does that grant application due and when do we get some word back?
That grant application is due by the end of January. We actually already completed the application. It would just be a matter of submitting it before the end of the year, which we can submit at any time, and we should have a warrant notice sometime in February.
Is this a interim step of getting full curbside service back available? Or is it going to allow us to go directly to curbside service?
This would allow us to go directly back to curbside service. Yes, yes. Before, if you remember, we contracted the trailer and the long haul with TCF Recycling, which when the market crashed in March or February of 2022, that's when we lost the trailer and the truck to come pick it up. But the town is equipped with its own 18-wheeler. We already have a walking four trailer now that we use to haul for our municipal solid waste to the landfill. It would be the same, a very similar operation as to what we do now for trash pickup. We would restart that curbside program for recycling.
So we would be handling it all within-house as opposed to having a contractor?
Yes.
And all that recycling stuff will go to the landfill?
No, the recycling would go back to the recycling centers up in the Chesapeake area.
Okay, so they live in the landfill now?
They are. The travel time between here and the site was just too far. Us and this town of Windsor are very much in the middle of this void where we're not close enough to Rainbow and we're not close enough to Chesapeake to long haul our recyclables. And so we both are kind of in that middle void that we're not really close to any of the centers where it makes it financially feasible for them to come pick up the quantities that we would recycle to take back. I think the last few months of that in 2020 were upwards of 5,000 per trip just to pick up 15 to 18 tons. One of the, anything else on recycling? The third item that has been brought to council's attention is the idea of the dog park. This has been one of the biggest reoccurring public concerns that has been brought to the attention of the town administration is the lack of the status dog park for residents. The administration has met with a lot of the residents, some of which are here tonight. I'm sure they're here to speak, hear their concerns and determine that local dog park would help enhance the quality of life for our residents. Initial estimates have shown that roughly $20,000 would help to purchase and install the equipment necessary for said dog park.
Do you have any sites in mind?
We've looked at about three different locations. A couple were town-owned as well as some that the town could rather easily acquire to put a dog park on.
And we'll have some input into that location?
Yes.
Different when the time comes.
And tonight is not the night to talk about that. We're not sure, we're not trying to pick a location for something we haven't informed you yet.
No, this is very, this is very much informative of what we saw from the public. These are by no means the final list of what the spending will be.
And it's not all-inclusive because the segment installed is $735,000 per red. And this eats up, I don't know, approximately half of the lease is 370, so not quite half.
So everything presented tonight is roughly $345,000 worth of donations. So of that, there's $390,000 that I'm still setting back.
I don't have any injection to the dog park, but I want to make sure we talk about our children at some point, which I think we'll hear from residents about that.
Yes, yes. Any questions around the dog park idea? The fourth thing that we have looked at is legal aid to acquire the abandoned railroad properties. I know that that's come up. This is quite a bit of time and effort on behalf of our staff to maintain something that we don't run. We've done this for years and years and years and years. One of the things that we would like to set aside some money on is to see what it would take for the town to re-acquire those properties, starting from Paradise Road up near where the Stop Shop and Friendly Check cashing location is. And that extends all the way down to West Queen, where Dr. Ali's old office was. That would be your west side railroad spur. And when we talk about the east side railroad spur, we're talking about from East 300 block of East Freemason down to the 300 block of East King, which comes into the Cock Mill area. So those are the two areas that we would like to reach out to our legal counsel just to figure out how we could acquire those properties. And really, the goal behind that is, is we just established the most recent bike pit plan with the Kimberly Morton Fund, DOT, starting to acquire some of that property would be some of the groundwork that's needed to consider bike trails, walking paths, multi-use paths.
Sounds like a greenway.
Yeah, yeah. Any questions around that? And the last item that's been brought to our attention also as a result of the bike pedestrian path was the idea of installing a new kayak launch and some land acquisition along Queen Anne Creek. There is some property located near Paxton Lane that is on the north tributary of Queen Anne Creek, tributary that runs down to Eaton Bay. And one of the pieces for the bike pit included a kayak launch and a multi-use path starting up near Paxton and actually following that waterway all the way down to King Street. And so if approved, the town would actually install a kayak launch and purchase property there on that north tributary, which makes sense, we've had some discussions around how we explored Queen Anne and how we start that process. And if you remember when we did the bulkhead work on the East Water Street section, part of that was the installation of new kayak launch, which has primarily been the entrance and the exit of your traffic. This would give you a northern entry point to kayak down and actually exit back at the Elizabeth F. Moore Park kayak launch.
Now, when you say back to the lane, are you talking about back there on the parish road?
Is that not a little back there with a kayak?
I want to take the first kayak ride. I want to get, move over to your house and walk down and get.
Don't worry, are you able to get up under the bridge, Highway 32 Bridge there that there's enough clearance?
Yes, and so the.
Are they going to send you enough land so you can park and do all this?
If council approves, if it's something that council would like to see. This is very important to us. This is something that's been brought up. Dwayne and I have been working very closely with the governor's office for the Hometown Strong Initiative this upcoming year of 2023, being the year of the trail, which also includes bike trails, but also includes kayak trails. And so one of the things that we're starting to consider is how we can make our waters more accessible and become a part of that kayak trail system.
Is that a mile and a half from Paxton down here?
I would say so, yes, sir. Any questions?
Since we're acquiring page, would that be a better option?
Well, we can.
Question.
We considered the, this being the.
It's not far enough up the creek.
Not far enough up the creek? I mean, this is like the beginning and the age is kind of at the end. Since you have a path that lives in a good way. So I mean, I think we probably will have launch somewhere or stop or something.
Closer to Sandside Drive. That would be the most west-eastern point of that.
My man's here, he's right. If I can remember, it's been a long time since I've been down there. You're going to have to dig that whole section out to make it bigger because that wasn't much of a, because as a child, we used to dip parents down there, man. So it ain't, it ain't that wide for folks to be going down here.
And that's the magic of kayaks. The tributary has been really well maintained by our soil and water conservation folks. It doesn't take a lot of water to flood a kayak. And so we've actually, we have been down and took a look at the property. And I feel like it's something that we can, can get some hopes at all.
It'd be a fun deal, Chris. I'd like to go down there with you some time.
Okay, you can do that.
It would be fun.
And so up until this point, those are the five items that have been brought to the town administration or to the council that we've had some conversations around. And that's really all I have to report for those items.
Okay, so having said that, we'll open the floor up to public comments and suggestions for our community. And we've got about 20 people this side up to speak. So we're going to try to hold it to five minutes per person. So try not to go over five minutes and we will be timed. So the first person on the list is, I can't read that name. Alton McPom, 145 E Scale Street.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank the mayor and council and Cory for having this open forum for input. I think it's a great idea. We appreciate the opportunity to be part of it. We all know that dogs love to run free with their buddies and the dog park is a perfect and safe place for them to do it. The dog parks are also an amenity for dog owners and for the community. Dog owners get to meet people from other parts of the community that they might not ever see. And the community, through this amenity, is able to attract energetic visitors and new residents. And these people really seek out communities with dog parks. And when they are in town, they spend money and they pay taxes. As Cory had mentioned, the dog park has been a priority in Eaton for some time now. The 2017 and 2020 vision statement of the town council referred to a dog park. And in the 2020 vision statement, it was, the wording was, identify land for development of a dog park and seek grant funding opportunities. So here's a grant funding opportunity. And we were a group of volunteers that just got together just in October to advocate for a dog park. And there are several of us here. Katn Bond is our photographer. And Tom Abbott is our researcher. And Blaine Sharrock is our social media and survey specialist, and he'll be speaking also. And we are, we are getting out to the community and trying to bring in some information about whether the community actually supports a dog park and if so, what the amenities would be and what the safety concerns are, et cetera. So Blaine will be talking more about that. We envision an ongoing relationship with the friends of Eaton Dog Park. And our pledge is to form a 501(c)(3) to raise funds for amenities for that park. And the role of the town would be to provide land, shaded land, and fence and provide basic amenities such as drinking water and comfort station. We also agree that we would like to continue to offer our support for the dog park as volunteers if there are projects that need to be done there. We will pitch in. And we concur with the $20,000 figure that the town has come up with for a park. From what we have looked at, we understand that that would be sufficient to fence a safe park with double entry for safety and a separate area for small dogs. To ensure safety, we are going to request that dogs be licensed and vaccinated in order to use the park, that rules be posted at the park, and that owners be responsible for their dog's behavior in the park. The question of location of the park is one that we heard the most. And I understand that you all are concerned about that, too. And we have looked at some of the town properties. And one of the ones that initially fits the description for requirements is the 2.39 Fullworts Creek Park. But we understand that there would be some environmental and legal considerations.
Darkness, access to the south.
Done, done? Okay, okay. So we will do whatever we can to make a dog park happen wherever ultimately it's recommended. And does Blaine come next or is he?
Yeah, Blaine comes next.
Okay, Blaine Sharrock.
250 Lakeside Drive. Yes, sir.
I wanted to take five minutes on this, but thank you all for your consideration of what we consider to be an important amenity for the community. Basically, a few things that we've been able to do on very short notice is to get a petition circulating in the downtown, which we currently have over 150 signatures supporting said dog park. Also, our social media is very active with over 100 members at this point. And we did generate a survey, which is part of that. About 26 respondents and shockingly, 100% of them were in favor of the dog park. The other thing about that, though, which we did find interesting is that most of the folks that wanted the dog park said they wanted it to ensure the safety of their dogs. So that was a huge consideration for them. And drinking water was the amenity that was requested the most. And 87% said they'd be willing to contribute to the creation and maintenance of said park. So it's a start, but I think it's a positive response from the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. And the next is Tom Abbott.
I'm a networker and also a dog owner. I look at the dog park as a stepping stone to provide dog owners in this community with further enhancements, training, make it a centerpiece for those who would like to work with their dogs a little bit more. My background is that more years ago than I could, I could tell, I finished my Basset Hound Patrick in his utility degree at the Kennel Club of Philadelphia. Getting a dog through that highest level of obedience training was not easy, especially not for a Basset. I also trained with the Connecticut State Police Dog Procurement Officer, my bloodhound, Pippa. And we were a regular search and rescue team in Southern Rhode Island and Eastern Connecticut when I was stationed up there with the Coast Guard. I look at the possibility, and let me just talk about enhancements.
Who passed it around to you?
Oh, okay. I look at the possibility of a. Um, I look at the possibility of a, an agility course over there or training so our dogs can stay as healthy or healthier than, than we. Um, I look at a place for obedience training and a place where we could get regular local trainers in the area to, to come in and work with our, um, with our, our dogs and the dog I feel like that, that having a park just to be able to socialize, uh, our dogs is a great start, but let's, let's make this something where we could actually improve the quality of life for dog owners by, by offering other services that this dog park might, might do. You know, I, I, I have a faddled dog and an Australian Shepherd, and, um, they're probably smarter than me, and they, uh, they're exuberant and they require a lot of training, and to have a, a place where they can run free, because black dogs in the summer around here don't do a very good job with the heat, so they gain a little weight. Anyway, this is what I look at. I also in past life have been a grant writer and a technical communicator, and, um, I fully support the, uh, the idea of getting grants that we could use to, to enhance our dog park a little bit more, and I'd be willing to work and, and come out of semi-retirement to, uh, to help write them.
Thank you, sir. And the next one on this is Adrian Heath. How are you doing?
Hello, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a dog owner and I love dogs. However, I'm here to represent the youth and the neglected North Edington. I think we need park and recreation and enhanced public spaces for youth and for the residents of North Edington. We have an abandoned, um, shopping mall that something should be done with, um, it's unattractive. Uh, there's a lot of litter and unattractive business, uh, businesses up in the north. We should use some of that money to beautify the north part of Edington. Quality of life is not the best up there. I'm new to the town, so I didn't quite realize what I was getting into when I bought a home up there. I do also pay taxes, and a lot of people even live by pop in the shops up there, they pay taxes, too, and I think a dog park is a nice idea, but, uh, public money spent on youth, my son, who said he had nothing to do on Sunday, what could he do that did require him to drive to Chesapeake or Elizabeth City? You know, a park that has roller, roller blade things, skating, outdoor gym type workout stuff for youth between thirteen and young people, thirty to, thirteen to thirty, what are they really doing in Edington? Idle hands can get you in trouble. So I think that's a, a better investment in the youth of the town and, um, taking care of North Edington. Freemason Park, which is very rundown. Morris Place has a park which is totally neglected. There are parks over on MLK that are overgrown and dangerous. I think their quality of life means something. I can't, I, I know dog owners think their dogs are more, um, important than, you know, the black youth down the street in the north part, but we need some money spent on our youth and invested in the quality of life in North Edington. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Miss Heath. And the next is Regina Bond.
Evening, mayor, councilman, uh, community. I want to speak also on the youth and the parks. I think it's very important because our children is the future, and it takes a village to help raise a child. And I feel like the violence and all the things that's going on in our town can be eliminated if we could focus on our children and make our living areas better, like our parks. In matter of, um, the park over there, like, it's like wooded. If a park was there, they could just run off with a child. It's no fence, it's no type of protection there for our children, they could run out, get involved. It's just like, nobody cares. So I guess in, in a child's mind frame, like, well, they don't care about us, so we're gonna just do what, go follow the people that we feel that care about us. I feel like if money was invested in outreach programs and nonprofit programs that can help with our youth, we could have a better, make model citizens get better graduate, you know, people graduating from school and stuff, wanting to college and come back opening businesses and stuff. I just feel like we need to invest in our children more, and it starts in our community. Um, we just had an event, um, in October, and we had a vision board, and the children signed, like, what do they want to see in Edington? And some of the things they want to see in Edington basically are communities centered somewhere they can go and be themselves, um, counseling, because we also know in these neighborhoods, it's a lot of social issues that goes there, they're not being identified in the schools and stuff. Teachers do, do their part, but it has to come, they need help from everybody. And, um, I just feel like we should invest in these parks and some outreach programs that'll help these kids in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next is David Hurlow from, uh, three oh one Level Three.
We've heard some, uh, talks about, about the railway, uh, the rail right-of-way turn trails. I'd like to also suggest that we look at the Philbert Creek watershed. Uh, I have, uh, education and work experience in water quality, weapons, flooding, and the constructed weapons of, along, uh, North Granville there at, uh, Hicks, uh, the park there, looks like it came on with a very good intention, but it seems to have fallen into considerable disrepair. Uh, been on the bridges there, or at least one of the bridges, it was, uh, pretty questionable whether you can make it all the way across, the boards are pretty rotten. Uh, there's a lot of trash and debris out there that's hard to get to because it, uh, the riparian areas are not being managed. I understand this is a somewhat partnership with the Corps of Engineers, there were two, uh, members of the Corps out, out there today, a survey on the site, I'm not sure, I just learned of this, I'm not sure what their role is, but I believe if we could upgrade that park, replace all the wooden structures that are in poor shape, uh, increase and improve, update the signage, and second, connect that Philbert Creek Park with a freeway along Philbert Creek all the way down this entire lane till we get to the park, uh, along Queen Street there by the freeze, across the street from the freeze. This would offer a good urban, uh, accessible nat- natural area, perhaps have some signage, uh, benches along this trail, uh, talk about the importance of water quality, uh, litter, uh, trash, personal responsibility for maintaining our environment, uh, in, in an area that seems to be somewhat overlooked and not, not easily seen or accessible. If it's not easily seen, it's not easily, it's, it's very easy for it to become ignored in the disrepair. So I'd like to encourage in looking into that for improving that wetland, uh, it would also help with the drainage off of the shopping center park, uh, help reduce, uh, trash and improve wildlife access, particularly birds along that corridor, uh, so have opportunities to have some educational outreach for the, the natural environment up in Edington. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, and next is Allo Warren.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to support Allo Warren. I live at six oh two North Oakham Street. I was a two thousand seven, two thousand eight recipient of the housing, getting town approved of me to get, and, uh, Tim Phelps built my home in two thousand and nine, but everything was smooth. Um, the only problem I have is after they did the house, then they came back and redid the driveway. The driveway is causing a flood to come down on my, in the yard. I did have that problem at first. Okay, so it, like, it was a slope, so now they came and they, it's great, so when the water, when it rains, the water comes from down North Oakham, down that end, from the other end, and all of it just comes down on me. And, um, let me see, excuse me a minute. Okay, so I've been like to, I'm asking the town, I'm asking and I'm begging the town to please redo the problem. I believe that they caused, because they wanted to come back and redo the driveways, they wanted to put cars to beautify, they say, but I've been complaining from two thousand and ten till now, and I haven't had any results yet. And also, the house beside me, six hundred, I've been asking, asking, please do something about that house. It's an abandoned house, it's been abandoned for years, but now through my knowledge, I found out that, uh, the house has been sold, and I didn't know anything about it, and it's just, that's all.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And next is Ray Harrell. Ray Harrell.
Hello. My name is Ray Harrell. I've lived here all my life, most of my family has, and there's somebody all right here in this room. Um, I'm here to talk about kids. Um, it seems like to me that a lot of people are concerned about dogs. Um, I don't think we need a dog park. I think a dog park is kind of ridiculous, to be honest with you. Um, a kayak launching, I don't think we need that. Anybody that wants to take a kayak anywhere can go to a state-funded wildlife grant and put off, just like anybody else can do. Kayak weighs, but thirty pounds, pick it up, put it in the water, just like anybody else. And the railroad, taking that up, making a, uh, what y'all say, a bike way, walkway, whatever, um, in my opinion, most people aren't gonna have their kids up and down that from Paradise all the way to Old Cock and Mill, running them down that street. Um, there's gonna be other traffic there. The chief police is sitting out there, and I told him the same thing I'm gonna tell y'all, that's gonna be a runway for people to get away from people like him. Um, I, preferably, would like to see more money go towards more recreational stuff for kids. Um, do recreation department, do ball fields, do lighting. Um, me, just like a lot of others, there's a lot of parents in the other room over there that I've seen countless nights and stuff like that, soccer practice and everything else, would like the same thing. Um, so for dog parks and kayak stuff and stuff like that, it sounds like to me y'all are fixing things up for, not for people of the future, but for people that's here visiting, non-resident people, stuff like that. Uh, like I said, I would like to see this town put more money into kids, um, the future of this town, the future of this state, the future of this country. So if we can't add nice things to them, I'm gonna beg my way, I'm gonna support a nice thing for the dog park, or kayak thing, or a walkway that probably no one's gonna use. Um, that's just kind of what I got to say about that. I'm here for the young ones, I've got two young ones that play sports, they love it to death, I love watching them, and I would like to see them have some nice things and be in a nice area. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, and next is Pat Grother. Next one, next one. All right, next is Susan, Susan English.
Thank you. I rise to speak in favor of investment in reinstating our recycling program. Um, it is something we all want in our town, and it provides opportunities that might, that, um, might have been barely touched on when you were describing bringing our recycling program in-house. It happens that these days garbage, what we humans throw away, are, it, it has become our world's most abundant natural resource, and it's an underutilized natural resource, largely because of lack of infrastructure. So we have a huge opportunity here in making this modest investment in getting a trailer so that we can reinstate our recycling program, and it will make it possible for us to seize future opportunities to make use of that natural resource, I believe. So I think you're gonna have a market for our garbage in this case. I also want to take just a sec to say about the kayak trail, that I have kayaked up to Pi- to Paxton Lane with the kayaking group that goes at sunset every Wednesday, and it's lovely. And our protecting that and other waterfront property is very, very important. Naming it a kayaking trail that requires, as the previous speaker noted, minimal infrastructure because a kayak is so light, um, it, it can save that waterfront, that waterfront wilderness, which we will continue to need as the waters rise and as we have more and more dramatic climate events, weather events in, in, uh, this waterfront area. So I endorse two ideas y'all have already got on the docket, and I thank you for bringing these ideas.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Carl, Steve Carl, and Mayor Scott Hagler will be on board. Next.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. I'm a member of the mayor's, uh, litter recycling and environment committee, and, um, there's an article in WRAL's, uh, online news today about Wake County's dump filling up very, very shortly. And I have three trash cans in my backyard, one for glass, one for aluminum cans, and one for other containers. And if I just put them on the street, they go into the town's trash truck, and they go to the dump, and it, you know, very soon, we're gonna be needing another dump. Land, and landfills are expensive, and they have to be lined, they have to be, you know, I mean, it's not just taking it out of the woods and burying it someplace. The recycling trailer will actually eventually save the town money, so it, it is a, a wise, uh, investment, and, and I, I really think that that's one of the things that the town really needs to, you know, put in, back into place and get curbside recycling, um, back into the, the mainstream. Something that wasn't mentioned, uh, that I'm gonna add to your list is we have a beautiful waterfront here. Uh, there are times of the year when we can't use it, or we should not use it, it becomes toxic. And, uh, I think that the town needs to invest in some type of, of continuous monitoring program. There are companies out there that put, uh, create, they have, they sell, uh, devices that can be put out on one of the buoys, that can wirelessly send, uh, information about what the, the blue green algae toxin levels are to, uh, on, you know, to, to, and, you know, these are types of things. We have a beautiful waterfront, but, I mean, all of you probably, you know, had times when you wondered why would, nobody uses it, and, uh, I would like to encourage in that type of, also, I mean, that's a major community type of thing, it would benefit everybody. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is Mayor Scott Hagler and Lisa Laws on board. All right, next is Mayor Scott Hagler and Lisa Laws on board.
Good evening, mayor and town council. Thank y'all for the opportunity to speak today. If it's okay with you, I would like to invite, uh, some other folks who came, uh, that I will be speaking on behalf of into the room. Is that okay? Good? All right, y'all come on in. Restricting numbers. You might wanna go stand along the wall over there by the Virginia. And this all started, uh, this morning, at about ten o'clock. Um, when I asked a few people if they would be willing to come show the council that there are a lot of Edington residents who care about what's going on with the rec department. So when they get in, everybody gets in, I'll start. Hey, are y'all in? I think so. All right, good evening, again, council and mayor. I'm Mary Scott Hagler, a lifelong Edentonian and a very active participant in our county's recreation department for the past ten years. I had my own stint in the rec department well over forty years ago. But unlike my own children, I scored more daisies and cartwheels than goals and points. Um, I will point out that I played on the exact same fields that my children are playing on today. And I have not seen one single infrastructure improvement that I'm aware of as far as bathrooms, fields, lights. I may be wrong there, but it, it pretty much is exactly what I remember. I'm here today with a good number of other residents of Edington to advocate for the youth in this town. Our beloved community is well-known as a retirement destination. And I'd like to see us promote with equal energy and vigor that we're a wonderful place to raise a family. I think you can see here tonight that I'm not alone. I'd like to perhaps boldly request that the remaining three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that's not been identified on your agenda be directed to our parks and recreation for facility improvement. If we were to receive this appropriation, one half would be used to spruce up existing neighborhood parks, which has already been mentioned, Morgan Park, Paxton Lane, and Stratford Hallford Reds. This number is realistic, research has been done. The condition of existing park facilities is a factor in applying for grant monies and these shabby neighborhood parks are in need of attention. I'd like to see the other portion of the funds be used to secure a site for a future unified location for our parks and recreation department. If you visit Perquimans, Bertie, Martin, Beaufort, Currituck, and other eastern North Carolina communities, you will see that our facilities are downright embarrassing. In comparison, our barely working lights, non-existent scoreboards, inadequate parking, too small concession stands, and downright nasty bathrooms are pitiful. Edington Chawan has an awful lot to be proud of, but you sure wouldn't know it looking at our recreation facilities. Our county commissioners are quick to point out Northern Rec to any critics and that is a wonderful, much-needed facility for folks who live in Tynor, in the northern part of our county, and for our middle school students. But it simply does not address the recreation needs of our population. In recent years, the county has been responsible for the recreation department, but they obviously need help. I'm sure many of you are aware of the recent effort to bring the Northern Rec tennis courts back from total disrepair. Is it time for a change with the way our parks and recreation department is handled? Perhaps, but that's a topic for a different day. I'm here to call on the town to step forward. This money is an opportunity for the town to step up and help where the county can clearly use it. Let's all advocate for the acquisition of land in a convenient location without a lot of conditions and strings like the Red Bank's property has. I'd like to see a unified effort to make major facility improvements, and the sooner the better. Let's game up. Our kids are our future and they darn sure deserve it. These are our future leaders, our future employees, our future employers. They will be our business leaders, our adopters, and our teachers. It's imperative to care for our children and they deserve better. There are additional funds available for a master plan for recreation. Let's get the wheels in motion on that immediately and use this money with matching grants to secure a physical place. We've discussed a spot with plenty of land with limitless potential and once we have a plan and a place, additional grants become more accessible. I have one last sentence. Our community has done a wonderful job of recruiting retirees, promoting tourism, and preserving history. Tonight, we are here advocating for the youth of our community to call Edington home. I'm asking you to use these remaining funds to show them that you care. All right, y'all can all.
Mary Scott, can we keep the speaker?
Sure.
Keep the supporters too, they couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, and I passed out to you, I told you that I posted something quickly at ten o'clock this morning and there are probably forty people standing in this room. And that list that I gave you has forty-nine other people who said, I had no intentions to make a list, but they said, please put my name on the list. It's a school board meeting, high school's playing at Perquimans, um, church basketball's starting at Rocky Hawk, there's a lot going on tonight. So given time, I think you would see triple the number here easily. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next is Lisa Laws and, uh, first, Lori Davlo will be on deck.
Hello, Lisa Laws. Um, I'm helping out our new town. We have property, um, in the county, just like outside of Edington, but we have town services. Um, first of all, I'd like to say that I have lived many places and visited many places. Edington is beautiful, this is where we chose to be, um, for a long, long time. I have noticed that North Edington is in dire need of improvement. I think everybody that takes the wrong exit, so to speak, uh, doesn't see the beauty of Edington. They see North Edington and I think that it needs improvement and maybe this fabulous park that is needed could be located there. And that would improve the surrounding area as well. Um, I am sad that our young people, um, do not have a recreation center. Perhaps the shopping center that is, um, abandoned and pathetic looking could be used as a recreation center. I am a mother and I'm also a dog owner. Um, I believe that the waterfront park many times is overrun by dogs. So the waterfront park that is so beautiful and, and a, uh, very prideful place in Edington could be improved by having a small dog park somewhere. Um, and as far as funding it, I know that their, uh, children are more important than dogs, even though I've always had dogs too. Um, many places that I have been, they charge initially for your first year of membership to the dog park. And perhaps that could be done, say fifty dollars a year, and a dog gets a tag or the owner gets a bracelet and it helps fund whatever may be needed for the dog park, that would not take money away from human beings. Um, as far as the wetlands go, I have worked with the, uh, Chawan Edington Environmental Group. Uh, we had a festival in the waterfront park in September, it was very successful. We, uh, are all about education and protecting the wetlands, the water. Um, and I think that whatever is built or improved in Edington should always keep our waters in mind. I have to say, I have been extremely impressed with how clean, uh, in other words, no trash, the, um, river, the bay, uh, the sound, I just can't believe how clean it is. I have been so many places where everywhere you go, there's trash, bottles, uh, plastic bags floating in the water, grocery bags in the trees. I don't see that here, I'm amazed. We have a waterfront lot and a year and a half I have seen one cupcake wrapper. That is it. And we are there constantly, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is Lori Davlo and on deck is Deborah Davis.
Hi. I'm Deborah Davis, representing New Edington Housing Authority. And I would like to make, um, two suggestions or recommendations with funds that you have. The first would be possibly a pilot or maybe a trial, uh, emergency rental assistance program. We knew that existed with COVID and funds were sent to the state, but it was poorly, um, executed. And individuals who do need emergency rental assistance do not be evicted, have been going to churches. And after COVID, churches' fundings were limited also. So it could be something like maybe five thousand dollars with a maximum of two hundred dollars each, one time, never again, and can just be a trial to see how it works. Two hundred dollars would definitely assist about twenty-five people. And you don't even have to use all of that for the year. The next thing I would like to recommend is a program I worked with in Virginia and it was a low-income rental, not rental, low-income down payment assistance program. And we provided two to three thousand dollars per person, low income, that was buying their first home in the locality. Um, a condition was placed on that, however, if that home was sold or the person didn't keep it, they had to repay or if it was sold, the town or whoever gave the money did get that back. So two programs, emergency rental assistance, that can be a pilot, and definitely, uh, low-income first-time home buyer, down payment assistance. I believe I read in the census a while back that your average age of your town resident was really in their forties. And I'm older, so I appreciate you promoting and marketing seniors, I won't see that four again. But we do wanna attract other families to come here and possibly even my families at the housing authority, assist them in stepping up and having ownership in property here in town. And I thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. All right, next up is Karen Mastin and then, uh, on board will be Julie Tunney. Karen Mastin.
Looks like Julie coming. Julie Tunney's coming. Ms. Tunney's coming. Ms. Tunney's coming.
Karen Mastin.
Karen not here.
Is Karen not?
She might have been the one that, um, stepped out.
Uh, good evening, I wanna, uh, my name's Julie Tunney. I thank you for inviting input tonight. And you've heard a lot of great ideas and I'm just gonna throw, um, my opinion in as well. Um, I am, agree with many of the folks, especially when it came to support for our youth and for recreational, um, opportunities. Of course, if we could first take the funds, invest them, and work off the investments, which is probably not allowed, to me, that would be the number one idea for sustainability. Um, and in everything we do, I think we need to consider sustainability of whatever it is that we're doing. Opportunities for recreation, I think you know the benefits, to health and wellness, be it mental health or physical health. Um, and so therefore, I'm a big proponent of that, let alone keeping our youth actively engaged in positive activities. So there are many i- ideas out there for what we can do. Um, I encourage you to think through that. I encourage you to, if you decide to go the recreation route, and, um, consider youth, that we get their opinions on, um, what would be best. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Gwen Brown and with Julia Townsend on board.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, yeah, so first of all, I wanna say wow. I wanna say wow to the group that came up to represent our children. And to see our children walk through the door, put smiles on my face. Since nineteen ninety-five, I have been fighting this fight with you all for years. And it seems like we just can't get to where we need to be. I hear all this stuff, quality of life and coming on Paxton Lane with all of these, um, kayaks and all this stuff. Take that kayak by that playground. On that playground, there's a, a swing that's been there for fifty-six years or more, 'cause that's how old I am. It's been there that long, rested and all. Fifty-six years of a swing. There's a basketball court and a swing. That is it, y'all, come on. We're taxpayers. We're community people. Yes, the dog park sounds wonderful for those of you who own dogs. I don't, but it's wonderful for you all. I get all of that. All I'm asking for is to have the same quality for my children, for my grandchildren, if you all want for these dogs. A swing set that has been on Paxton Lane for over fifty-six years. Come on, y'all, we're taxpayers. Where's our money? What is our money doing for us? What is our money doing for us? Come on, y'all are with me. I need all y'all to take a ride down Paxton Lane, all y'all, and see what I see. And see what I see. Thanks for the roads, the roads look real good, dishes look real good. But let's walk on our playground. I would like to take my grandkids to the park to swing, but not only that fifty-six-year-old plus swing set is down there. Make us look like what Queen Anne looked like. Make us look like what cemetery looked like. Make us look like what anything looked like besides a fifty-six-year-old swing set. We would like some walkways. We would like to see something besides a fifty-six-year-old swing set. Y'all gotta think about that tonight, we all gonna be in. A fifty-six-year-old swing set is what we have. Again, a fifty-six-year-old swing set.
Thank you. All right, next up is Julia Townsend. Julia Townsend.
Hello, I'm Julia Townsend. Uh, first of all, thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us. Every week, I bicycle, walk, walk a dog, jog on the streets of Edington. At least once a month, I'd ride a bicycle way out into the county, so you know what my interests are. But before I get on to that, I just wanna say, I drove down Paxton Lane today. I didn't even know, I didn't, had never been down there before. And it is a beautiful street at the end of it, it was gorgeous. So if that possibility of the kayak launch were to happen, that would just be wonderful. I did notice the park, really caught my, I was kind of shocked to see it, agreeing with all the comments of the previous speaker. If the garbage and the old mattresses and old TVs were picked up, uh, down that road too, that would really be a smashing addition to the kayak opportunities here. Um, let's see, before, so I'd like to start with the, uh, Kimmel and Horn Report that came out this year. I've spent quite, Kinley and Horn Report, I've spent quite a bit of time studying it. Was glad to hear that our town didn't pay for it. Uh, it, uh, has a lot of information, but it's very hard to read it. I hope that they will, uh, present a com- combined plans and suggestions. It is very hard even to, to study that book, you have to flip a page to see what the proposals are. For me, it is very important that a pedestrian or cyclist can get from the waterfront to food line and back safely. And as far as I know, these key intersections- And as far as I know, these key intersections of the post office, Walgreens, crossing back and forth on Virginia Road have already been approved. Ideally, this could be a circle using other suggestions in that report, that you could go up to Food Line and come back a different way on West Queen. Additionally, if we could get to the Dollar Store down Queen Street and back safely, either walking or on a bicycle. I understand a few years ago, there was an attempt to widen Queen Street, which was not approved. I don't know if that argument could be discussed again. One factor that we realize is that very important roads in our town are state-owned. Route 32, Broad Street, MLK Boulevard. So any plans that happen for the town, I hope that there is someone keeping their eye on the overall vision. For example, if you improve sidewalks near the Food Line, and then later, the idea of the multi-use trail on the opposite side of Food Line, if they are not in sync, if they're not planned together, then it doesn't really work very well. I would also support improvements on Broad Street, considering reducing it to one lane, reducing the speed limit, making a bike lane there. The argument might be that there just aren't enough bicycles to use Broad Street. But I think if there were space to ride on Broad Street, you would see more bicycles on Broad Street. I would encourage no trails, as were suggested, on the creeks or the waterways, as it can damage the habitats. I would encourage speed bumps or humps on the road I live on, on Batten Road, Park Avenue. More cameras for safety. I'm not sure about sharing cameras with the private cameras. There's a discussion of sharing individuals' cameras with the police cameras. I think there is some overall education that needs to happen. I see cyclists riding down the left-hand side of the road. And I think that can be improved with just signage, so that people know bikes need to be on the right side of the road. Signage would also be for the littering problem that we have. Just this morning, I saw huge bags of fast food on North Broad and diapers on the side of the road. So if there were more signs, maybe harking back to the 70s, the big pitch-in signs. And I've made a written proposal in the past, I never heard back, about signs that could be painted by kids at the Boys and Girls Club, saying pitch-in. And every year, every two years, they're repainted with different colors. So we get the new generation thinking about not littering in the streets. And, but those things would have to be enforced. So there could actually be real punishments for that. And lastly, I would just like to say, I like to, I support very much all of the suggestions about North Edington. And I encourage whoever said that to get those ideas in writing. We're all encouraged to submit things in writing by the end of this month. And I'd like to see specifics, anything with a rec center, sounds like it's going to have to have staff working there, which is like a long-term investment. Very interested to hear more about that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next is Matt Wumble. Matt Wumble.
Hello, council, town. It's really good to see everybody come out to advocate for ideas. My name is Matt Wumble, I'm new to town, only about a year. My involvement in the town so far has really been around the rec department. So I want to just put my voice and advocate for rec department funding, but specifically for community boating. And really what that looks like is access to the town dock area, access to boating opportunities, but mainly mentorship. A lot of folks have talked about children needing something to do, safe places to go. We have a very active and beautiful community that is represented by all walks of life, all kinds of people. And if we can open that up to access to the water, living in beautiful Edington, I think that would be all of our dream. We've seen a sailboat out in the water, had a lot of discussion about other aspects of water use, but that's where my heart is. So in the last year, I've been a volunteer with the rec department. We are in the process of rebuilding the sailing program through rec department. And through a public-private partnership with the rec department and the Edington Yacht Club, we've been able to raise money for 10 new boats for the community. And so this is 10 sailboats that are really targeting kids, to get them out on the water, to teach them how to sail, to teach life skills. And that's a gift really of donors in this community that want to see that happen. That's the beginning. There's a lot of need and opportunity. The Corps ASH, you all have a very difficult job and responsibility to take money and put it to good use, whether it's this funding or otherwise. The ASH is really around the rec department funding and support for these kinds of activities. Obviously, there are other needs that are in competition with this, but having a community boating program with access to waterfront launch areas where kids are safe to be trained and taught, that's really what we're advocating for. And a lot of members of the rec department team that have been volunteering to teach kids are here, as well as members of the yacht club, so I just want to acknowledge their presence. Thank you for the opportunity and appreciate everything that you all do for the town.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. That is the last person that we have to sign up to speak to. I want to thank each and every one of you for bringing to us your concerns. And I assure you that these concerns will be taken into consideration. The recreation department is very high on our list, I know that. And so thank each and every one of you for what you brought to us tonight. I'll be taking into consideration. Corey, do you have anything else? All right, having said all that, I'll take a motion to the Senate. Motion to the Senate. Meeting is adjourned.